Almighty God, we humbly ask you to send forth the Spirit of wisdom to guide the hearts and minds of our civic leaders. May their decision be just, that their principles reflect goodness, and their dedication to justice be evident. Strengthen them in times of weakness, enlighten them in a moment of stress, and protect them when they face unjust opposition. About all, may they serve with love for their people and doers to their care. We ask for your blessing for Mayor Kennedy O'Brien, the members of our town council, Mary Novak, Donna Roberts, Stanley Stasznarski, John Jabrowski, Michael Colashi, and then Volker. Special blessings to the police department, both emergency squads, and all companies of Servio Fire Department. Let's remember our brothers and sisters who served for our country in armed forces, and their families, as well as all the men and women who serve our town. May you bless our all citizens of Saro, so that our community may flourish in harmony, prosperity, and goodness. We ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
With that, salute to the five. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for whose demands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would everyone please remain standing? There are two things I need to do. First, one, by statute, we need our attorney, so at this time, I'd like to appoint the firm of DeFrancesco as our borough attorney. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint the DeFrancesco firm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Roberts.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Polisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Stasznarski.
Yes.
Sabrowski.
Yes.
Young fellow. Welcome aboard.
Young, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call forward the 19th District Assemblyman and Speaker of the House, the Honorable Craig Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the two roles. I'm going to have the privilege of swearing in Mary in just a few minutes, but first, the mayor has asked me to lead us all in a moment of silence to remember President Carter, who passed away just the other day. President Carter was a man who was different than most elected politicians, right? A man who, from the very outset of his humble beginnings in Plains, Georgia, through his time in the White House, and perhaps most importantly beyond that, was somebody who demonstrated that you can transcend politics in so many ways, and caring and making a difference in people's lives is more important about what you do to help people. He's a man, the way that we all know and recognize, the work that he did for Habitat, for humanity, built thousands of homes with his wife. He was a man who brought about peace in the Middle East, however fading that may have been. He was a man who genuinely cared about people, a good and decent man. Think of what you will see as a president, but I don't think there's any dispute about the fact that Jimmy Carter was, at his essence, a very good man who genuinely cared about people, who was an example of how kindness can still be a way to lead. And so, I'd ask you all to join me in a moment of silence, and while we're at it, let's take an extra second to think about the 10 people who died in New Orleans last night, and the tragedy there, and how we need to, how we have to commit to being a better society. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you all. Thanks for being here, Mayor. Thank you for the privilege.
Mr. Speaker, if you would, we have a uniformed Marine here, then I would like to ask you to come forward, so that we can give you a big thanks for your service to our country and for guarding our gates of freedom. You may have known you when you were this big, but now you're a Marine. Can you identify who you are?
I'm Mickey Masterson, Richard Masterson's son. Been a Marine for about a year and a half now, and came here to show my appreciation for my father and, you know, support.
You have our appreciation. With that, we'll all take our seats, and we will begin with the Oath of Office.
Well, I know we know now how Mary won, but the vote after was half as good as her family attendance. So, thank you very much, everyone, for letting me be here, and I approve the swearing in Mary. Mary, welcome back. The people of Saro missed you. And stop, let me take a second to say, to stop, congratulations. It's going to be a privilege to work with you as well, and to both of you, and to all the members of the council and the mayor. You know, towns are special because the people who run them and who are living them care about them, and I don't think that is more true of any place than right here in Saro. It's an extraordinary place to live, with terrific leadership, and the members of the council, and now Mary and Stash will join in that same commitment to making the community even better each and every day. So, Mary, it's my privilege to be with you today, and I'll ask you to put your hand on the Bible, let the Bible right in the air, and say, "I, Mary Novak..."
"I, Mary Novak..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and that I will bear true faith..."
"...and I bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...in the United States..."
"...in the United States..."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"I will faithfully..."
"...impartially..."
"Impartially..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...all the duties of councilmen..."
"...all the duties of councilmen..."
"...for a three-year term..."
"...for a three-year term..."
"...expiring on December 31st..."
"...expiring on December 31st..."
"...2027..."
"...2027..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God..."
Congratulations. Good job. Thanks. Thanks again, Councilman, for your service.
I, Stanley Stasznarski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and that I will bear true faith..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...and this state..."
"...and this state..."
"...in the United States..."
"...and the United States..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially..."
"...impartially..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...and justly perform..."
"...all the duties..."
"...all the duties..."
"...of councilmen..."
"...of councilmen..."
"...for a three-year term..."
"...for a three-year term..."
"...expiring on December 31st..."
"...expiring December 31st..."
"...2027..."
"...2027..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God..."
Congratulations.
Nicole, statement of publication.
Take notice that this reorganization meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on Wednesday, January 1, 2025, has been posted and advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Valka.
Here.
Polisi.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Stasznarski.
Here.
Sabrowski.
Here.
Okay. With that, I'm going to call, um, Vinnie, your turn. Just want to tell everyone, what a pleasure it has been working with Vinnie this year. We give you back to Nicole and your family.
He waits for me back.
And, yes, you wait. Married that one?
Yeah.
Anyway, he did, he set an exemplary standard, which I'm quite sure everyone, you learn from people and you talk to people, so there'll be a succession of the caliber of chief that you are. So, with that...
Tracy Polly.
...present this to you, and thank you, up here, to the 46,000 people of Saro that you protected in 2024.
Thank you, sir.
So, with that, we're going to administer the oath of office to the new fire chief, George Gavran, if you would come up.
I state your name.
I, George Gavran. Do solemnly swear.
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and the State of New Jersey."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"I will bear true faith."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"Allegiance to the same."
"...and to the governments established..."
"...to the governments established."
"...in the United States..."
"...in the United States."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially and justly perform..."
"...impartially and justly perform."
"...all the duties of fire chief..."
"...all the duties of fire chief."
"...of the Borough of Saro..."
"...of the Borough of Saro."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God."
I state your name.
I, Rich Masterson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same."
"...and to the governments established in the United States..."
"...and to the governments established in the United States."
"...and in this state, under the authority of the people..."
"...and in this state, under the authority of the people."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially and justly perform..."
"...impartially and justly perform."
"...all the duties of first assistant fire chief..."
"...all the duties of first assistant fire chief."
"...of the Borough of Saro..."
"...of the Borough of Saro."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God."
This time, I'd like to call forward Alfred Gavran III as the second assistant fire chief for the year 2025.
I, Alfred Gavran III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same."
"...and to the governments established in the United States..."
"...and to the governments established in the United States."
"...and in this state, under the authority of the people..."
"...and in this state, under the authority of the people."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially and justly perform..."
"...impartially and justly perform."
"...all the duties of second assistant fire chief..."
"...all the duties of second assistant fire chief."
"...of the Borough of Saro..."
"...of the Borough of Saro."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God."
Thomas. Okay, I'm going to make the announcement. The first aid is down with the flu. But the president is Dexter Thomas, who I've known for a quarter of essentially easily, just great guy. The captain, Hugo Medina, and the assistant captain is Rojan, I can't pronounce the name, Rojan, I'm going to have to push it. How am I doing, Amos? Pretty close? What do you answer if I, okay, all right. Anyways, they are here to help us, to serve us, to save us, and they have my undying loyalty and gratitude, as does the rest of Saro. With that, I will call together for the oath of office, the 2025 officers for the Morgan First Aid Squad. The captain is Nicole Hogan. The assistant captain, okay, Chris Gutierrez, Chris Lee, security restaurant, and Detective Sergeant, Detective.
I, Sebastian Perez.
I, Yuri Rusko.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...that I will bear true faith."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"...and allegiance to the same."
"...and to the governments established in the United States..."
"...and to the governments established in the United States."
"...and in this state..."
"...and in this state."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"...under the authority of the people."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...impartially and justly perform..."
"...impartially and justly perform."
"...all the duties of..."
"...all the duties of assistant captain."
Of the Borough of Saro.
Of the Borough of Saro.
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"...according to the best of my ability."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God."
I'll begin by saying a very happy new year to everyone here, everyone in the borough. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to welcome you to the annual reorganization meeting of the Borough of Saro. Thank you for being here and joining us in this annual New Year's tradition, as we plan for another year of progress. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues on the dais and to offer a special greeting to newly-elected councilwoman Mary Novak. Mary, I would, I look forward to working with you again. You and I have been working on and off with each other for a good quarter of a century, so it's a pleasure. Welcome back, Mary. I'd also like to welcome back Councilman Stash Stasznarski, who won reelection in November. Well done. When I was sworn into office last January, at this exact time and place, I made a pledge to greatly improve the parks in our community as part of our overall commitment to renewed customer service. Many planes are in design, but there has already been progress to report today. In a few short months, you will see new walking paths at Kennedy Park, as well as the renovated restroom. We've also vastly improved the parking lot at Veterans Park, as well as installed lighting. In addition, we have designed two new athletic fields at the UST Recreational Complex, and will be going out to bid for proposals to undertake the work as quickly as possible. We are also finalizing grant submissions for a large-scale revitalization of Bailey Park, another important project. My hope is you and your families are already taking advantage of new programs we have initiated this year through the Saro Recreation Department, as well as having visited our grand new farmer's market that opened in 2024 in the park behind this building. Enhancing communications to residents is another critical hallmark of our customer service. To that end, we have strategically placed three large LED signs around town with messages about public events, weather emergencies, and other relevant information that Saro residents should know. One LED sign has already been installed on Ernston Road. Others will be installed in the upcoming weeks in front of the Saro Active Adult Center on Main Street and at the Fort Grumpy Recycling Center on Bourn Town Avenue. In other areas of progress, we continue working closely with the developers at Riverton, which finally, and let me reemphasize, finally, began construction a few weeks ago on the site at Chevalier Avenue. I have been in steady contact with the Saro Economic Redevelopment Agency, which says a key lease has been signed at Riverton, and a $2.5 billion redevelopment plan is moving ahead. For many of us who have eagerly awaited for construction to commence on this former industrial site, the moment that Riverton began pouring concrete and foundations, we knew that all the work of so many from Saro over the years is bearing fruit. Riverton, as they say, is finally going vertical. I did want to make a special note of thanks, it's not in my speech, but a very special thanks to our former, I don't even know what they called them, really, they have a new name. What was Dave Craigill's title?
He was the head guy for the county.
And, and when I became mayor back in 2000, he was the first guy I went to see. And he was the impetus behind the Riverton project. He was the one that lent us the money, basically on a handshake. And, and Dave, I know you're looking down from heaven today, but it couldn't have happened without you, so I just give him my humble thanks. He turned into a great friend and mentor to me, and there's just not enough credit that's given to this man for a lot of the great things that have happened in our town. So, Dave, we thank you. We also look forward to celebrating the commencement of this mixed-use project, the largest of its kind in New Jersey, with a ceremony in the spring. And we expect many more groundbreaking events in the coming years. You should be amazed and proud. My office receives phone calls on a daily basis from many other major investors across the country, looking for opportunities in Saro. We carefully balance each and every proposal we hear. We are only interested in projects that help our town become more affordable to you, creating both jobs and stabilizing taxes for the long term. We aggressively seek outside funding beyond what is raised by taxpayers to achieve many of the improvement projects you're seeing around town. It's amazing to see what can be accomplished when we work closely with dedicated partners that share our vision for the future of an affordable, yet vibrant and safe Saro. To that end, I would like to once again express my deepest appreciation to the commissioners of the Reinvigorated Saro Economic Development Agency, which is ensuring that the right type of investments comes to our community. Sarah and I share a vision. Redevelopment is all about minimizing impact and maximizing returns for the people of Saro. I would also like to thank the many volunteers for being appointed to municipal and boards and commissions this year, as well as many other important positions around the borough. I've said it for many years, and I'll say it again today, volunteers are the back Volunteers are the backbone of this great community. So allow me to recognize one very special volunteer in our community. Sue Paul. She is she is a retired teacher, Saraval schoolteacher, and she is just concluding her 40th year as a trustee in our library. She has other obligations that are calling her. Um, and this will be her last year until she tells me she's she wants she's able to come back. But we are planning on doing a podcast documentary about what the changes have been in the library in the last four years with Sue. She doesn't know anything about it, but this is how she's planning on it. But she's done a remarkable, remarkable job. Tireless volunteer, dedicated volunteer, always with. Is that me or you? Oh, that's Stash. Anyway, she's just a great gal, just a great gal. I didn't even know her, know what know what I'm saying and that. Anyway, we're we're gonna see her as a movie star in the months to come. The second person I'd like to acknowledge, a a a good friend of mine, Rich Kosmazki. He's a very, very special individual who just completed 50 years, 50 years as a volunteer fire department in Saraval. Can't thank Rich enough. He's a veteran. Never asked for anything for himself and 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 just a tireless volunteer. Also, I don't know how many years, but 50 wouldn't surprise me that he's volunteered with the veterans. So Rich, we're gonna make you a movie star too, a Saraval production, uh, about the changes that you've seen in the fire department in the last 50 years. So thank you, Rich, and thank you, Sue. You set the example, uh, for what a volunteer should be. So look forward to the production, and I think it's gonna be great. I'd like to extend my, uh, well, I already thanked them, so I'm ahead of myself in the speech. So the best part of the speech, in closing, I would like to once again thank the people of Saraval for entrusting me with this important leadership role. As your mayor, I remain and always will be deeply honored by your support and trust. One of the things that you may have noticed this year is I put in a staff of of two individuals to deal with any issues, any questions that you have. One is our retired police officer and tireless veteran volunteer Ken Kelly. Ken, can you hold your cane up? And the second person was Zach Schlicker. And Zach has come up to the third floor to be Glenn's, uh, to work with Glenn closely, and he is being, where is our good? Zach, stand up, please. His shoes are being filled by Andrew Ozeg. Andy. So they they cleared up a lot of what hadn't been attended to, and they are extraordinarily helpful. When I explain to people what you get in your taxes from Saraval, one of the things I say to them is, um, we give you the garbage cans, and it has wheels on it. And and if you're the guy in the house that takes the garbage out, you greatly appreciate that. That's still my job. That being said, when a wheel comes off, you call up and 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 we come out and we fix it. We replace it. So there's a there's a lot of service here in Saraval, and I'm a big believer in customer service. And I know Ken, as the chief of staff, is also a big believer in customer service, and then Zach followed him, and Andrew is following Zach. And and I think they have done a really remarkable job. They're not only they don't answer the phone and then and then schuff you off to somebody else. If if the situation calls for it, they come out to wherever you are to get a firsthand look at the issues that you have, and they address it promptly, quickly, professionally. They've just done an outstanding job, and and I hope customer service remains a a big part of what what it is to live in Saraval. My wife, uh, many, many years, you know, for the first 20 years that I was mayor, I had my home number on the mayor's business card, and I'd give it to people. And I'd say, listen, uh, I want you to call my home number. You gotta get my wife Janice, tell her your problem. And I can guarantee you, I will get it. Her your problem then becomes her problem, and I will get no peace. And it was a pretty good system, but now we've gotten older and 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 the town has gotten larger, and it's time for, uh, as much as I love and and could never replace my wife. She needed she needed she needed to give that up. But Ken, although not as pretty, does an excellent job, and his whole staff does so. I just want to personally thank them, as well as the clerk's office, who nothing could move in the borough without them. They do a fantastic job. You do have a new CFO going into 2025. Danielle, how do you say Danielle's? Just Danielle. Everybody knows her as Danielle. She's an excellent employee. I knew her from the day she was hired, and she'll be a great CFO. So Saraval's in a good place. I just want to wish you my warmest wishes for healthy and prosperous and happy 2025. And with that, I shall ask the council president, or I will go to the, I I'd like to get the newly elected officials with your permission. Let them give them the courtesy. So, Mary?
I'd just like to say how humbled I am by the election results. Kind of like a piece of gum stuck on the bottom of my shoe. You can't seem to get rid of me, and I appreciate everybody that voted for me. And I promise, even the people that did not vote for me, I will represent you to the best of my ability. Like, thank my family for supporting me with all this. My husband Jim, my children, Jennifer, uh, and my first grandchild Emily, my son James, my daughter Elizabeth, her husband Mike, and my granddaughter Cora, who held the Bible for me. And then there's my son Charles and his beautiful wife Melissa. And there are four children, Mason, who I have to call on him first because he's a whole minute older than Nathan, and that minute is very important. And Nathan, and Charles Jr., and my youngest grandchild Haley. I can't thank them enough. My sister Nancy, who years ago, I'm on five, or I was. Nancy is my best remaining sibling. So happy to see her here. Told her she didn't have to come, but. And my nephew Michael, her son, and my great niece Anna, who came with him. I can't, oh, Roseanne, I didn't see you there. And Michael's wife, beautiful wife, Roseanne. Uh, Kennedy spoke about, uh, final construction going on down there, and I I can't tell you. That was one of the reasons why I was very upset when I lost the election last year because I was around when McCormick first started this back in 1995. And I said, damn, I'm not gonna be around for them to actually start building. And I'm back, so I'm really gonna be happy. That would be one of my greatest things is to go and be there when the doors first open. I'm very excited about that. And, um, I know we already had a moment of silence for the people in the world needs. I I started the day early, uh, going to mass at Sacred Heart Catholic Church, the only one around that still has an early mass, and I'm an early riser. And I was really so, you know, I'm happy. And then I came home, and I saw the news. And really, it's devastating. We have to do better in this country to love one another. And with that, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Sanarsky?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to thank everybody for electing me. I was always involved in a lot of things in town. But politics was something new to me. I was committee man, I was on BIC, I was involved in a lot. But last year was my first one-year term. I learned the intermechanisms and how a lot of things work. Uh, I'm glad to be here for another three-year term, and I will support the borough residents 100% in anything that they need done in town. Us, we have a great council here, and we're gonna work with everybody to try to get things accomplished. And thank you very much.
Happy new year, everyone. It's great to be back, and, um, we have such a great council here this year, and we have such wonderful opportunities and a lot of positive things that the mayor has already announced that we have in place. I'm looking forward to a productive and, um, just a very productive year. And my goal this year is absolutely still to make sure that we have clear and truthful information shared with the community so that we can make the best decisions possible for everyone in the community. So that's my commitment to you this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Balca?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say a big thanks to all our volunteers and wish everyone a happy and healthy 2025. I, along with the rest of the council, will be working very hard to make 2025 the best possible year for the residents of Saraval.
Councilman Calaci?
Okay. There we go. As we stand on the threshold of a new year, I want to take this moment to express my deepest gratitude for the trust and the support that everyone has given me this past year. So serving as your councilman, it's been a profound honor, and together, we've made significant strides in improving our borough. Reflecting on this past year, I'm proud of the progress that we've achieved. We've tackled important issues, supported our local businesses, and worked tires tirelessly to enhance the quality of life for all our residents. Our journey has not been without its challenges, but your unwavering support, it's been a source of strength and inspiration for me. And also like to extend my heartfelt congratulations to Stash Sanarsky and on his election win and rejoining our council for a full three-year term. I look forward to continuing our work together. Additionally, I'm happy to welcome Mary Novak to the council. Her years of experience as a former councilwoman will undoubtedly be a unique asset to this council. So looking ahead, I'm excited about the opportunities and initiatives that we have in store for the upcoming year. And the mayor kind of spoiled some of that. I thought it was gonna be a surprise. My commitment to you remains steadfast to listen, serve, and lead with integrity and dedication. So together, we will continue to build a community that will be, uh, that will all be proud of and a place where our families can thrive and our future is bright. As we embark on this new year, I invite each of you to join me in working together for the common good. Your voices and your ideas are the heart of this community, and I'm here to ensure that they are heard. So thank you for your continued trust. Here's to a prosperous new year ahead and for all of us in Saraval. So let's make this year our best year yet.
Councilman Zabrowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll be very brief. Uh, my voice is very poor, so you don't need to hear it. So Mary and Stash, welcome. Uh, congratulations on the victories. I'm looking forward to working with both of you. To, uh, to the residents of Saraval, uh, just, uh, have a blessed 2025. Looking forward to, um, good things to take place. One of the things we had earlier was the swearing-in of our firemen and our first aiders. Uh, the mayor kind of said it earlier. Our volunteers are the lifeblood of the borough of Saraval. And I think that's more so the borough of Saraval than any any town that I know. Those numbers are getting low, and that's including those that that want to be applying for committees as well in the town. So instead of making a resolution this year that's you're gonna lose a couple of pounds or you're gonna run a couple of more miles, go and make a resolution that you can make a real difference. Go on our website, get an application, join one of our committees, or join the fire department, the first aid, the auxiliary. They're wonderful people. I want to keep them safe all year, but I want to see those ranks grow. Again, that's the lifeblood of what Saraval's all about. So again, I wish you all very, uh, happy new year, prosperous new year. And Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. With that, I'll begin with the appointment list of borough professionals. Uh, one-year term, borough engineer, CME associates, and municipal, uh, Morgan Municipal, along with two individual, Dave Samuels and Mark Colmeyer. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Labor council for a one-year term, Rusty, Mordell, Strom, Almond, Cipriani, is there a motion?
I make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
A borough auditor, one-year term, Suppley, Clooney and Company?
Make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Sure.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Bond council, a one-year term, Archer and Grinder, is there a motion?
Make that motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Accounting services, a one-year term, PTF O'Connor Davies, is there a motion?
Make that motion?
Is there? Is there? Roll call.
Councilpersons Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Um, municipal prosecutors, a one-year term, Robert Scott Lamonton and John Krenzel, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Financial advisor, a one-year term, Northwest Financial Group, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Is there? Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
A public defender, one-year term, Roselli and Roselli?
Make a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Uh, one-year term, special counsel tax matters, Nolan and Lang, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Special counsel rent leveling board, one-year term, Nolan and Lang?
Make that motion?
Second.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
A special counsel, other matters, uh, two firms, Abinski Law and Jordan Records. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Balca?
Yes.
Sorry, Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Uh, municipal planner, one-year term, Acuity Consulting Services, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Uh, one-year term, special counsel on the cola matters, DeFrancesco Bateman and Kuzman, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Uh, architect, one-year term, USA Architects, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Now.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sanarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Public agency compliance officer, one-year term, Glenn Skarcinski, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Balca?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sorry, Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay. I did acuity.
Well, we have to do that for the affordable housing.
Okay. A one-year term affordable housing administrative and planning services, acuity consultant services. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Dalka?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
A council president for the year 2025, Annana Roberts. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Novak?
Yes.
Dalka?
No.
What was that?
No.
Polisi?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay, standing committees. Oh, Donna, that's really you.
Do you have my sheet?
Yeah.
So standing committees, I'll start by committee. Is that okay? So admitting finance, number one, Councilwoman Dalka. Number two, Councilwoman Zabrowski. Number three, Mary Novak.
Next.
Planning and zoning, number one, John Zabrowski. Number two, Michael Calaci. Number three, Donna Roberts.
Next.
Public safety, Michael Calaci, number one. Dan Dalka, number two. Stanley Zabrowski, number three.
Next.
Public works, Mary Novak is number one. Donna Roberts is two. And Dan Dalka is number three.
Next.
Recreation, number one, is Donna Roberts. Number two, Stanley Zabrowski. Number three, Michael Calaci.
Next.
Water and sewer, number one, is Stanley Zabrowski. Number two, Mary Novak. And number three, John Zabrowski.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Novak?
Yes.
Dalka?
Yes.
Polisi?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay. Appointments to boards and commissions. Board of adjustment for a four-year term, Anthony Bella and Joanne Gottstein. Is there, you know, I'll go through it, and at the end, you can. Planning board, a four-year term, mayor's, no, I did that. Right, right. Environmental commission, Ernie Reed, a three-year term. Environmental commission, a one-year term, Christina Sataka as the mayor's appointment. Board of health, a three-year term, Joe Natarangelo, Joe Cabara, Patricia McCracken, and Val Taur. Human relations commission, Mahish Chinitas. It's a three-year term, and Lori Zabrowski. Commission on aging, a three-year term, Christine Sataka, Donna Cookta, Dorothy Watson, Linda Vona, Mary Ann Weber, Patricia Dunn, Rosanna Schmidt. Cultural arts council, Bernadine Wajewski, Christopher Cuno, Gregory Cuneo, Jeff Schnitzer, Moira McCormick, Sangina Das. I may have missed people. If so, this goes on throughout the year. Shetree Commission, it's a five-year term, Edward Guerilla. Rec board, a three-year term, Bruce D'Apolino, Edward Guerilla, Judy Ryan, Martin Biancomano, Robert Havens, Ruth Ann Mahoney, Sharon Rotus, Vishav Patel. The Jif alternate, a one-year term, is Meadow Magrani. Jif appointment for a one-year term, Rebecca Garbusky. Okay. Veterans Alliance. Okay, Veterans Alliance, a one-year term. Just so everybody understands, the veterans give me who they want, and I just formalize it here. So, and it's the American Legion and the VFW. So for the year 2025, Edward Marchinsky, Joel Bloom, Ken Kelly, Marco Medina, Stanley Droll, Stanley Prevolovski. Equal opportunity housing officer, one-year term, Glenn Skarszinski. Mayor's designate to the Minnesota County Solid Waste Advisory, one-year term, Elise Barone. Lower Raritan Watershed Areas Theory Committee, a one-year term, Dave Leitner. Watershed Management Area Rep, for a one-year term, Dave Leitner. The one-year terms on Sarah, Donna Roberts, John Zabrowski. A three-year term on Sarah, Rob DeWise. I think that's it. Oh, we have the, oh, sorry about that.